All right, we got two thumbs up. So we're going to call our board meeting together. It's, today is Tuesday, October 17. The hour is now 6:50 PM. And this is a select board meeting. We have two agenda items this evening. The first is a business item for a common victual license. And the second, we will have some guest speakers and some discussion with some fellow boards in town around the topic of housing in general. So I'll come back to that topic in a few minutes. As we always do at the outset of our board meetings, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. So if someone from Origin Thai Bistro is present, why don't you come up here, sir, and join us at the table? And we will talk to you a little bit. So if you could introduce yourself, are you Mr. Agundez?
Yes, I am.
All right. And your first name is Caesar?
Caesar Agundez, yes.
Thank you. Okay. And are you the owner?
Yes.
All right, great. So just tell us a little bit about what you're asking us to do. I know you've been in business here before, and you just mentioned to me you had closed the restaurant.
Yeah.
And you're looking to reopen?
Yeah, from December and hopefully to now, we've been closed.
Yeah.
So yeah, we're just trying to reopen the restaurant again.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And you're making any changes to the floor plan or anything like that?
Nothing, everything is the same.
Most of your staff will be the same people?
Yes.
Okay. And are you on site as the owner?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right, so this is a common victual request, and my colleagues, I think, have the necessary documentation and the floor plan. Let me ask if they have any questions for the applicant. Mr. Mackey.
One very important question. Will the pho recipe be the same?
Yes, it will.
Perfect.
No touches. That is all I have as chairman.
All right. Anyone else?
That was my question.
I have a quick question.
Crapman?
Through the application, it says that you got 20 seats and two, how many employees do you have at the location?
Right now, we got three.
Three?
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. All right, any other questions? No? Okay, so this is a standard and pretty routine request. If I can ask one of my colleagues to offer a motion on the matter, I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the common victual license for Origin Thai Bistro located at 1699 Shawshank Street, Unit 2, Tewksbury.
Second.
All right. And for our recording secretary's benefit, the motions offered by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will vote in the affirmative, so that is a five to zero vote. And you can contact the town manager's office tomorrow, and they'll work with you on the actual license itself, okay?
Okay.
Very good. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Welcome back.
Have a great evening.
All right. Let's move to our, the original reason we scheduled tonight's meeting. And I want to acknowledge, I think there's members of the planning board present, at least one that I can see, welcome. And I know there are members of the Housing Authority present, so I want to welcome them. And this is a long overdue effort to have a discussion about housing in the town of Tewksbury, in particular affordable housing. And we have invited representatives from CTI or Community Teamwork, and also representatives from NIMCOG to join us this evening. And actually, both organizations will present to the body. I want to also acknowledge Assistant Town Manager Sadwick and our Community Development Director Alex Lauder, who have been very much involved in these topics for a long time. And I'm sure they'll have some input as we go through the evening. What I want to stress at the outset is this is not a public hearing. Our intention is to treat this as an informational session. We're actually going to move to the audience and invite our guests to be on this side of the table so we can see them and hear them better. And we all will have the benefit of the larger screen behind us, assuming there's a presentation. I also want to stress that this board, as well as I believe the planning board, in the next few weeks, will be addressing the topic of MBTA communities. That is not a topic that we're going to get into tonight. Specifically, the Board of Selectmen, excuse me, the Select Board, will be taking that up at its meeting next week on the 24th, and we will have a presentation and a discussion around that. So I want to just note that at the outset, if you came to speak to that subject matter, I want to make sure that you know that at the outset. So we're going to have our presentations. We will invite questions from the planning board, the Housing Authority members, and my colleagues here at the Select Board, and then we'll take it from there. But again, it's not a public hearing. We're here to listen. It's not going to be any votes or decisions made tonight on anything. But we all, I think, appreciate that housing is a significant issue across the Commonwealth, if not beyond the borders of the Commonwealth. It's definitely an issue of concern here in Tewksbury. This board, in the last couple of years, has made affordable housing one of its top priorities. So we feel it was necessary to gather everyone together and at least enter into some open discussion and begin to absorb some of the information that others who have studied the topic from a different vantage point might be able to offer to us. So that's the purpose of tonight's meeting. Is there a quorum of the planning board present? Do you need to call a meeting to order, Mr. Chairman?
No, three was there.
Okay. So if you want to do that, if you want to come to the mic, and I'm assuming the Housing Authority has a quorum present as well, and we can just call the meeting to order in conjunction with our meeting. Thank you. And welcome, Mr. Johnson.
All right. So a quorum of the planning board being present, I'll call our meeting to order as well.
Thank you. Okay. And is the Chair of the Housing Authority Board here?
Oh, yeah, he is here.
All right. You can use that mic if you want, just to save the steps.
There you go. Take care of the old guys. As Chairman of the Housing Authority, we are only missing one member, so we have a good turnout tonight.
Excellent.
And call the meeting to order.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chairman of the ZBA also.
And the Zoning Board of Appeals is also present. All right.
I need to call a meeting.
Do we have a quorum? Yes, so you want to call that meeting to order as well, so we can cover the open meeting law requirements?
Zoning Board of Appeals, let's come to order.
All right. Thank you. Okay. All right, so those are my comments tonight. Mr. Montori, you wanted to offer, I think, a couple of, an overview anyways.
I do, but prior to doing that, can we just take a brief recess and then let the presenters set up?
Yeah.
And we'll go from there.
All right, we'll do that. Let's take a two-minute recess, we'll let folks get set up, and we'll move to the audience.
Thank you, everyone. Before we go to the presentation, I just want to just give a brief overview of how we got here. So back in July, when the Board of Selectmen, when the Board of Selectmen met to talk about their priorities, affordable housing was the number one priority for them. At that time, we talked about getting this group together to have a discussion about affordable housing in the community, the approach we want to take, and the utilization of funding we have available. I have had an opportunity to sit through presentations, both from NIMCOG and from CTI, and I found them very helpful. They were, they provided good education and understanding for anyone that sat through the presentations. And as I thought more about getting this group together, I felt that it was important to have both of them here tonight to provide a framework for this group to have an understanding of the need for affordable housing in the region and in the town specifically. Because I do believe there are people out there that don't, don't think there is a need, doesn't, don't think there is a need for affordable housing, don't have an understanding that it does impact people in this community. And the presentations that I had the opportunity to sit through really were eye-opening. And I applaud both CTI and NIMCOG for the work that they've done in this area, the presentations that they've made, not only to area managers from different communities, but to the region as a whole. And so I thought it'd be a good opportunity for them to do it here tonight. So we're here to talk about affordable housing, focused in on, you know, the region and the community. As the chairperson said earlier, we're not talking about MBTA communities, we are not talking about the migrant crisis. We are talking about affordable housing and how we can move forward in Tewksbury. We have $6.3 million in a housing trust fund. We have a little over $1 million in the CPA housing fund. So that's $7.3 million we can use to further affordable housing in the community, and we need to decide how we want to do that. And tonight's the start of that discussion. And hopefully, there's more meetings to come to have further discussions. So with that, I'm going to move to the front of the hall. Steve, I'm going to start with you to introduce yourself, and then we'll move along, and then we'll start the presentations.
First, excuse me, Steve Jockus with Common Ground Development Corp. Common Ground is a nonprofit subsidiary of Community Teamwork, and our mission is to work with the communities to help them implement their vision of affordable housing.
I'm Anne Seerway. I'm the Chief Planning and Development Officer with Community Teamwork. Community Teamwork, just as an organization, if you aren't familiar with us, in addition to being a community development corporation, we are also a community action agency and a regional housing agency. So we do lots of things beyond housing that we're talking about tonight, and I, because I am who I am, I have lots of information about those other things. If anyone needs information about the other services and other things we do as well.
Good evening, I'm Carl Howell. I'm the Chief Program Officer at Community Teamwork as well.
Chris Hayes, Housing and Economic Development Manager for Northern Middlesex Council of Governments, and we'll probably explain NIMCOG when we get to our presentation.
Good evening, I'm Jenny Raitt. I'm the Executive Director of NIMCOG. We're the regional planning agency for greater Lowell, which includes Tewksbury. Thank you.
Okay. With that, I'm going to turn it over to CTI for the presentation, and then we'll go from there.
Let me roll? All right, perfect. So again, good evening. I just want to thank you for inviting us here to talk about housing, both regionally and locally. The goal of this presentation is to make you aware, aware that housing instability is present in your community, and that it will take investments in housing, policy implementation, and a clear commitment from the leaders in this community to address that. Our attention is to arm you with information that will help shape the community in the So this is a slide we put together for Tewksbury at a glance. As you can see from here, you know, that demonstrates that the Tewksbury community is an affluent community, also a community with a high rate of seniors living in the community. The median household income is roughly $20,000 higher than the median income in Massachusetts for a household. In addition, Tewksbury has one of the highest home value markets in the greater Lowell Here's the demographics for your community. It's a very homogeneous community, where over 90% of the residents are white. This is concerning, especially because Tewksbury doesn't have representation that reflects the general population. But even more so concerning is that it's sandwiched in between two communities that are majority-minority populations. And this could be, this could represent a red flag or concerns around policies, practices within the community that enable ageism, classism, and racism. However, I want to acknowledge over the last 10 years, there has been a change in the population. You can see here where there's been a significant increase in African-American population in Tewksbury, as well as some others. And so there has been work that the community has been doing to enable and incentivize people of color to move to this community. Regarding housing stock, if you look at the slide, you can see that the town does have, does not have housing capacity. There's roughly 12,000 households, and there's about roughly 12,000 units in the community. Virtually every unit is accounted for. Over the last 10 years, the community has grown by 8%, and there's a need to increase housing stock to keep up with this continued growth that is happening in this community. The lack of units will prevent growth and also allow current members to stay in the community, as well as, you know, the youth that are living in this community to stay in the community as well as they transition to working in the community, work in the area, and transitioning out of like college and trade schools. The other concern to point out is the imbalance of owner-occupied units, which is 85% compared to rental units, which is 15%. Your housing stock of single-family units and owner-occupied units are significantly imbalanced compared to what is optimal from our perspective. The imbalance points to challenges in the housing choice, and again, symbolizes red flags or precursor markers to disparities regarding racism, classism, and ageism. Without rental options and more variety of housing options for those who work and live in your community, it creates financial barriers for residents to stay in the community and for others. So for example, which we'll get into a little bit later, but for your service workers that are working at your local restaurants, grocery stores, such, it makes it really challenging for them, given the wages that they earn, to actually reside in this community due to the costs and the lack of affordable housing in the community. And lastly, there is a 10% state threshold for communities to maintain housing stock that is accessible for households below 80% area median income. Tewksbury is below that. They're hovering right now at 8.99%, so roughly 9% of the stock is focused on subsidized housing units, which is 80% AMI. So here's some additional slides regarding your occupancy, how you relate to the local community. We can see Tewksbury is at 83% owner-occupied units. It's hovering around the third highest owner-occupied unit portfolio across the greater Lowell. Transition to affordability, based on the median rent for Tewksbury, I believe it's, oh, it is on there, I'm sorry, I was trying to do things. It's over $2,300 per unit. That means a single-parent household would need to work a full-time job earning $40 an hour or higher to afford housing in the community. This is based off federal expectations that a household should not pay more than 30% of their housing towards, of their income towards housing, or be considered a rent burden. Currently, you have over 40% of your renters rent burden by this definition. When we look at our housing assistance provided over the last two years from Community Teamwork, Tewksbury residents have received over, sorry, close to $1 million for the last two years in either rental arrears or mortgage assistance that we have provided to the community through state and federal funding. Based on the needs assessment, based on the needs assessment, 1,315 households in Tewksbury fell within the extremely low-income sector level of, that's 30% of area median income or lower. Just around 900 households were at their very low income levels, which is between 30 and 50% AMI, which just means is between $32,000 and $55,000 a year for the very low. And for extremely low is under $32,000 a year of annual income that live in the community. In addition, based on median home sales in the town, as homes turnover, a resident would need to earn over 142,000 annually to afford to purchase a home in the, in the To explain, to elaborate on that, even your homeowners are burdened. Where we're seeing roughly 30% of homeowners are paying over 30% of their income towards their housing costs. Tewksbury Housing Authority also has a waitlist of over 14,000 individuals looking for housing in this community. I want to note that while Tewksbury's median income is the sixth highest in the greater Lowell, their housing market is the most expensive in the, in the greater Lowell area at number one. So here's just another graph on median home sales. You see where Tewksbury falls compared to your neighboring communities. And then here is a graph on two bedrooms, two-bedroom median rent. You can see where your community is, as well as the yellow line is the average for the United States, the red line is the average for Massachusetts. And I also just want to kind of throw some recommendations out here before I turn it over to Steve Jockus regarding what I started off with was investing in housing. There needs to be strategies from the community around using their funding supports, whether that's CPA, as well as the housing fund that was already mentioned, as well as additional funding opportunities that are provided by the state or the federal government to incentivize developments of affordable housing in the community. Allow decision-makers to distribute funds quickly instead of making funds through political decisions, through votes. Additionally, identify new funding opportunities that real, that align with your housing production plan. Second recommendation is really to review policies and implementation of those, looking at your land trust practices and mitigate exclusionary practices. Traditional recommendations are lot, lot-size mandates, parking mandates, expand on multifamily zoning areas and such, as well as identifying policies that support, that support your most vulnerable, your seniors, if you're housing insecure, and your lower-income residents. And lastly, just commitments from the community, making a clear vocal commitment to addressing housing challenges within the community, strategize and utilize your production plan, and embed plans into decision-making throughout your processes. And I'll turn it over to Steve.
Thanks, Carl. Carl had to twist my arm to get me to show up tonight, but I'm still glad to be here. Anyway, just in terms of background, the affordable housing production idea is much more difficult to achieve today than it was pre-COVID. COVID definitely had an impact on the supply chain. We have a project that we just received, our certificate of occupancy for an act in Tavernier Place, which is a 31-unit LITC, low-income housing tax credit project with, for seniors aged 62 and persons with disabilities. And as a result of COVID, we had difficulty securing a switchgear, electrical switchgear, which was in our budget for $12,000. We ended up paying $44,000 for it. Dealing with the utility on getting a transformer also delayed our project considerably. So instead of being finished in 14 months, it took us 24. The other impacts, of course, with the Federal Reserve raising interest rates, we've seen an increase in construction loan interests. I'm working on a project for homeownership where their interest rates started off at 5% on an $18 million deal, and it's now nine and an eighth. And that has a real effect on project feasibility. The slide here does talk about what affordable housing is. Market-rate housing, of course, as you know, has no subsidy to it, and is, rents or sales prices are determined by the market and, and supply and demand. And of course, we're seeing incredible sales prices, especially in a city like Lowell, simply because there isn't sufficient supply. I go back long enough to know when multifamily housing units were selling in the $7,800-per-unit range. We're closer to $300,000 a unit these days. Workforce housing, as the slide indicates, looks to provide housing at 60% to 120% of area median income. I'll talk a little bit about quasi-publics that are involved in these different types of affordable housing development. And there's of affordable housing development and their financing in a little bit later. Affordable housing, as you see in the slide, again, 30% of household income, both on the for rent and for sale side. And on the sale side, it's 30%, the purchase prices are based on 30% of a person's income, less principal and interest, less homeowner association fees, less property taxes, less insurance costs, all of which adds to the difficulty of producing a unit that costs over $500,000 to build and meeting that 30% criteria and setting a sales price that would then entice a developer to be engaged in that type of affordable housing development. I hadn't seen that before. So you can see that this next slide talks about the income levels and for various unit sizes, what the 30% rent would be. And I'm going to stick with 60% of AMI because 60% of AMI is the income level for 9% or 4% low-income housing tax credits. And those tax credits are a very significant tool in the development of affordable housing. It's a source of equity. And the way it works is that for each dollar of credit that's available to the investor, they'll pay 95 or 96 cents, at least, if that was the case when we recently, when we financed Tavernier Place a year ago. With interest rates the way they are now, that cost or that price that you'll get per credit, it may be a little bit less. So you can see that a studio unit would be rented at $1,390, the one-bedroom at $1,490, the two-bedroom max would be $1,788, three-bedroom unit would be $2,065. And there aren't very many four-bedroom units produced, but not to say that there isn't a need for them, but there aren't that many produced, and that's 2,304. So Carl mentioned that CTI is also a regional housing agency. They administer, I think it's 2,500 PVA units for the state agency, now the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, formerly DHCD, or the Department of Housing and Community Development. The governor, of course, appointed a Secretary of Housing and Livable Communities as a way to focus on the crisis of needing to produce housing at all income levels for the Commonwealth. Public housing, I think we're all pretty familiar with that. I think one of the challenges that public housing agencies face is that there is, there isn't even sufficient money to maintain what they have in a proper way, never mind build new units. Housing choice and project-based voucher, those go to, project-based voucher is one that is assigned to that specific unit. So in a lottery process, you have to select tenants who would be income-qualified based on their family size and composition for that unit. Unlike a mobile voucher where the unit is assigned to an individual or a family, and they can use that to try to find rentals in the marketplace. And again, the difficulty there is whether or not the project-based unit will be accepted by, voucher will be accepted by a landlord if he can get more money in the market rate environment. The mass rental voucher program is the state's comparable program to the federal project based Section 8. And low-income housing tax credits, I've talked about that a little bit already. Federal and state resources. So there's a gobbledygook of alphabet soup that goes with affordable housing at the state level. The state is also responsible for administering and the distribution and the allocation of not only low-income housing tax credits, but federal home funds and an allocation of project-based Section 8 units for the development of affordable housing. Sorry about my voice, I hope you can hear me okay. So some of the, so there's two LITC programs. One is the 9%, which of course is the one that provides you with the most equity investment from an investor. It's not debt, it's equity. The 4% credits are allocated primarily to two quasi-public agencies. One is mass housing, and the other is mass development. The state is really looking to use 4% LITC to preserve expiring use of affordable housing so that that housing isn't converted into full market rate, but to, that can be used to help refinance the development in order to keep it affordable. Local resources, you mentioned CPA, Richard, and your Affordable Housing Trust. I'd like to understand how it is that you built your trust up to 6.3 million, but I wonder if that's a result of any mitigation programs that you've had with private developers? That's a significant resource. And the state, of course, is looking to get as much bang for its buck than it can, and will be looking to localities to also have a commitment, a financial commitment. And in Kate Race's words, cash is cash, and fee waivers are fee waivers, and the king is cash. So that really plays an important role in being able to compete for state resources. That's a game that really requires significant patience and staying power. The 2023 round, I believe, had 50-plus applications. Applications are submitted through Intell grants. There's a pre-application that's required in October, and the one-stop application, which is all the information you can conceive of for any housing development is due in Last round, again, in 2023, they had over 50 applications in their one-stop round, and they funded 23. And nonprofits like ours are competing with the major developments in the Commonwealth, developers in the Commonwealth, Wynn, Beacon, even POA, which is a nonprofit. All of these organizations have significant resources and have a greater ability to find a property and hold on to it while they're going through the approval process. We started a project in Draken in 2019, and the governor announced the award in May of this year. And we hope to close in the first or second quarter of next year. We have another site in Acton, for example, and we were trying to project out, and that's at a very preliminary stage. We're just in the schematic planning side of the equation, and we're projecting out what the timeframe might be, and we're thinking we might get that finished by 2029. So whatever you can do on a local level in order to make your project competitive. Working with whomever you choose as a developer, if it's a nonprofit, recognize that, you know, they may need assistance with the pre-development costs, which can be $400,000. Trying to find a site where you don't have to close on the acquisition, that the owner will have enough patience to have you go through that whole funding round and closing process is another challenge. So there may be a need to use funding to do the acquisition before you actually get funded. Obviously, that introduces some level of risk from the standpoint of circumstances like interest rates changing and affecting your feasibility, and just the added cost of carrying a property while you're trying to get the deal funded. Historic tax credits. There are credits at both the federal and state level. With tax reform that took place in the previous administration, those are less valuable than they once were because, once upon a time, historic credits were allocated to cover 20% of your eligible costs in one tranche, once, one lump sum, and now it's spread over several years. So it has less appeal to an investor. Foundation sources and grants. Yeah, there are foundations who will support you, but, you know, if at $500,000 a unit, you're not going to get a foundation that's going to make that much of an impact. And conventional debt, the next slide goes to some of the quasi-publics. So we talked about some of the challenges and some of the programs that these organizations run are meant to help you with those challenges. SEDAC, for example, can offer a nonprofit developer pre-development financing, and they can also offer you acquisition loans. They also, as a cousin to EO HLC, administer a number of the alphabet, number of the programs in the, in the funding arsenal, including housing innovation funds and national trusts, usually those who are allocated for supportive housing rounds and notices of funding availability. CBH goes to supporting units that are allocated for persons with disabilities. And Affordable Housing Trust is managed by Mass Housing. They also get an allocation, as I said, of 4% credits. They do tax-exempt permanent financing, and they also had a program for workforce housing, but I apologize, I'm not really sure what the funding level is for that these days. MHI is a tax credit syndicator, and they also provide construction loans. So what I mean by tax credit syndicator, they'll get a number of investor banks to form a pool, and once a project is allocated tax credits, they will respond to your need for that equity investment. And so they manage the relationship between the investor, the developer, to make sure that we're adhering to all of the rules and regulations that go with the property management side and tenant eligibility associated with the LITC program. There are also private syndicators, and there's a plethora of them, actually. So if you're fortunate enough to get an allocation and the other rewards that are necessary, you really should issue an RFP and reach out to all of those, as many investors as you deem reasonable, to try to get the best possible price. Mass Housing, I just mentioned, Mass Housing Partnership, great organization. They provide permanent financing. They have a number of tools that they use to do that, HUD-backed financing, for example, and funding for permanent loans that comes from area banks. They'll also work with you on providing assistance, workshops, if you will, on everything from 40B to what it takes to develop affordable housing. They've got a very large community outreach presence. And so 40B or MBTA zoning, you know, if you're caught up in that, Richard, I'm not really sure if Tewksbury's needs to address that issue. But again, they're a source of information. Mass Development, they also receive an allocation of 4% credits. They can provide permanent financing for smaller deals, and they have participated with primary lenders in permanent financing. And they can provide advisory, real estate advisory services to NPLs or nonprofits. There's two others that aren't listed here. Legislature, once upon a time, in its wisdom, decided to give the insurance companies a break, and on the condition that they create pools to support community development and housing development. One is the Life Initiative, and the other is the Property and Casualty Initiative. Both of them can provide funding for lines of credit. They can provide pre-development loans and acquisition and construction financing as So this is the subsidized housing inventory. I have to say that, you know, at 9%, Tewksbury's done a pretty good job. I'm going to assume that a lot of that is the result of 40B projects, which have come in and have been permitted based on 75% of the units being at market rate and 80%, 20% of the units, rather, being at 80% of area median income. You all understand the term area median income? So it's really the combination of the incomes of all of these towns that you see for greater Lowell, including Lowell. And the area median income for the region is much higher than it is, for example, a city like Lowell, or maybe, it was 44,000 the last time I looked, but it's 66,000, okay. So in a way, in Lowell, you know, the term affordable housing in Lowell, even though it's affordable in terms of the region, isn't really that affordable for the community. And we're seeing that with new developments, again, because of the COVID impacts that I mentioned before, you know, you saw rents on your chart that were $2,300. You know, I looked at a couple of market rate or, you know, 75, 25% deals in town, and, you know, the rents were anywhere from $2,300 for a one-bedroom to, I think, $3,030 was what I saw for a three-bedroom unit. So even though, you know, the rent levels for a LITC deal may not be affordable for everyone in the community, it's a, it's one that is more affordable than market rates would be. And again, because of interest rates, supply chain issues, construction costs, all of those things have an impact on the end product. Let's see. I think I'm at the end.
Just as a note, the data that is in this presentation largely came out of our community assessment, which is a monster document that I have many copies of. So if you looked at this, I should know better. If you looked at this and you thought, I want more numbers, I have more numbers. So, and we cover both just Tewksbury, but then also the region as a whole. It is, it's always a debate whether we look at just this town, and I also think the, how you compare across the region is important. Some communities may obviously be more analogous than others. So we do have that information. If you would like additional data, and also have some tools that can help us gather other If you would like additional data and also have some tools that can help us gather other data, if there's other information you would like, we can be helpful in that regard as
So just one other point I would make, I guess, that most of the, most communities these days who are developing what they would call housing production plans, and I know that Tewksbury has one, I think most of the communities have worked with NIMCOG in putting those together. It includes an awful, if you haven't seen it, these housing production plans include an awful lot of data about the community itself, about its housing stock, its population demographics. Considerable amount of work goes into these things. And it also identifies sites that are deemed to be appropriate for affordable housing development. So I don't know if that represents any, if there's really an interest in producing family housing, senior housing. If there's really an interest in doing that, there may be a need to look at that housing production plan. If it's outdated, bring it up to date and think about whether or not any of the sites that are identified in that plan represent what I would call low-lying fruit in terms of community acceptance and appropriate location in terms of access to community services and schools and affordability. So I'm glad everyone's still awake. I haven't put you all to sleep.
Thank you. Testing, okay.
Well, you know, that way I can keep my eye on you two guys.
So thanks, CTI, for that great introduction, and thanks, Tewksbury, for inviting us to talk about housing, because that's what we all love to do around this table. And as a reminder, I'm Chris Hayes. I am the Housing and Economic Development Manager for Northern Middlesex Council of Governments. And what is NIMCOG, if you don't know? It is the regional planning agency for the communities that you see above. And maybe the best way to think of us, for the purposes of this discussion, is that we're a consultant that provides free services to our member communities. And most recently, we actually, this year, finished the housing production plan for the Tewksbury, at the request of Tewksbury, and also we're doing some behind-the-scenes work on MBTA communities. And that's a lot of what we do for the communities. We also sometimes do things like doing zoning feasibility studies or drafting bylaw amendments, things like that. And I wanted to start off with why we at NIMCOG feel it's important to be doing, having this discussion, and why we really applaud the town for doing so. And that's because our region does have a housing shortage, both for market rate units and for affordable subsidized homes. And we believe this is true at Tewksbury as well. 13% of households in Tewksbury, and that's more than 1,500 households, pay more than half of their income on housing costs, whether that be rent or mortgage and utilities. And you saw all the other stats that CTI shared as well. And we really see not just a human cost on that, but also a cost in terms of employers not being able to find employees and considering moving away or not locating in our region because of that, both small businesses and large businesses, and of course, public agencies like the town as well. We also are seeing people moving farther away, like to New Hampshire and to other areas where there's affordable housing, but still commuting in for work. So we're seeing environmental impacts and also quality of life and congestion impacts because of all of that traffic. And we think this chart really summarizes things well, which is that lower line, that yellow line, that is inflation-adjusted income, which has increased not quite 10% over the last 10 years in Tewksbury. Meanwhile, the rent has increased 30% to median rent, as they showed, and it's the second highest in the region. And then that median home sales price, which is a little bit outdated, that's why it's a little bit lower than what CTI showed, that increased 50% over the last 10 years, obviously still increasing. We wanted to talk a little bit about what types of folks are cost burdened, what types of households are paying more than 30% or 50% of their income on housing. And I want to draw your attention down here. You can see it really is all types of households, but the largest categories are kind of small families, up to three people in the family, so they might need two to three bedrooms, maybe four bedrooms, and also elderly non-families. That's often elders living alone. But as you can see, all types of family types, even including those large families of four or more, do often face cost burdens. I also want to draw your attention to where most of the cost burden is in terms of the income spectrum. That's at the extremely low income, less than 30% of that AMI that CTI shared. 70% pay more than half of their income on housing, and then the remainder, much of it pays more than a third. But as you can also see, it is all across the income spectrum. What we often think of is people that are above the median income. We really need to start bringing the market rate down to reach those folks. And then people at the end of that spectrum, the low end of that spectrum, really do need a concentration on subsidized affordable housing. Oops. You know, we talked a lot about this, so I'll skip this. But just to look at that SHI goal, again, that CTI touched upon, the goal was updated for the 2020 census. I'm sure everybody here kind of knows about the SHI. That new goal is 1,200, a little bit more than 1,200 affordable units. And as I mentioned, Tewksbury has 1,088 units on the SHI right now. I understand there might be some in the pipeline that might bring you up to that 10% goal. But we really see that there's probably a need beyond the 10% goal. If we were to provide housing for everyone in Tewksbury, every household in Tewksbury that may qualify for an affordable unit making 80% or less and is severely cost-burdened, half or more of their income, that's nearly 1,500 households. And then if we were to provide one for every cost-burdened household, including those who make 80% or less but pay more than 30% of their income, that's 2,300. So that's why we are really kind of excited to talk about the Housing Production Plan. It was passed recently by both the Planning Board and the Select Board and approved by the Executive Office of Housing and Living in Communities at the state level. And it really took data and public input, and the public input was pretty robust. We had two well-attended meetings, and we had a survey with over 100 responses, which may not sound like a lot, but that's actually a pretty significant portion of Tewksbury's households. And it put those together to create a proactive vision, goals, and housing strategies. There's a lot of housing strategies listed in the Housing Production Plan. Each one has a priority level, a milestone date, a year that the town wants to get it completed, and a really, you know, a couple of paragraph description of what it means. So I really encourage everybody to look at it, or if you have looked at it, to refresh yourself every so often, because there's some really great detailed strategies in there. Just going to go over, the ongoing high-priority work includes encouraging housing that meets the vision of the production plan, but then also adaptive reuse, infrastructure, conservation land, community engagement, educational opportunities, training, and of course, funding for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to keep it at that high level and enable folks to spend out of it. But then specific goals at near term would be to work with regional nonprofits to locate housing for, the Housing Production Plan does target 60% AMI or less, updating the zoning board of appeals guidelines to align with the current state laws, consider missing middle sub-districts near multifamily districts, comprehensive parcel inventory of publicly-owned land that could be used for affordable housing, a zoning bylaw amendment, and creating a little housing strategy, and of course, the MBTA communities is also a high priority goal. Looking outward, looking at revising the family suite bylaw, working with DCAM on the Tewksbury Hospital properties, conducting a marking study to maybe tweak the affordable housing bylaw, to evaluate zoning adjustments in a lot of different ways, but basically, again, to keep allowing for basically more diversity of housing types. To make those housing numbers work, you can't have a single house on an acre of land. That land-to-house ratio generally won't pencil out for affordable housing, so that's why we're suggesting a variety of ways to provide more units on the same level of land. We also are recommending creating an Affordable Housing Trust Action Plan. So that'd be a five-year plan, so that will provide more guidance on how to make Affordable Housing Trust expenditures, and also, I'll get to that. There's a lot of others. Take a look at them, I could be here all day. But how should you use this Housing Production Plan? And that's what I was getting at. One of the big things is communication. So not only does the Housing Production Plan communicate to the public, it communicates to CTI, it communicates to private developers, it communicates to landowners what Tewksbury is interested in developing, what kind of housing, what locations are appropriate, and you really want to keep promoting it, keep showing it off to different agencies that may be interested in partnering with you to meet those goals. One of the goals was to build consensus. That's why we tried to do as real best a public outreach process as possible in concert with your amazing staff, to really make sure that there's buy-in for these policies. It also can be leveraged for implementation funding, and of course, it can also serve as a work plan for the staff in order to prioritize certain activities that work toward a larger strategy. Okay, I'm going to only touch on MBTA communities because we aren't supposed to be talking about it much, but this is why. It's a regional perspective, and I'm going to talk about the region a little bit. And certainly, we can also provide a lot more information at the appropriate time. But the reason why we talk about the region and why we have to talk about MBTA communities is because we're also undertaking a regional housing strategy. Under consultation with the nine communities, we realized that not any one community can tackle these goals on their own, so we applied for and received funding for a regional housing strategy as well that will include three major pieces, one of which is some of the data that we're talking about, only really digging in at a deeper level, creating really reasonable benchmarks for housing production and affordable housing production that each town could make that fits their specific niche in the region, and we'll be working with a consultant to be able to really dig into that data. We also are going to be elevating folks' voices. We want to share stories of local folks who have had challenges and successes with housing in our region, and really amplifying those voices through media, through social media, through videos, events, what have you, in order to really put a face toward what we are talking about on this table. And then finally, we will be providing an educational toolkit for each community so that they have the tools they need to, let's say, do public education, to pass strategies at town meeting, or to develop zoning or develop other strategies. Just a quick preview of that timeline. Hopefully, everybody will be getting an invite soon for a December kickoff meeting. We are looking to create basically a summit where boards and committees and councils from all nine communities, nonprofits, developers, bankers, everybody who touches the housing spectrum in some way in each community, we're trying to gather in one place along with state and federal partners. Three times, once to kick off in December, really start to develop those goals and create problem statements. Once later in the spring, to really start developing those strategies that will be not just local but also region-wide, and then finally, kind of kicking off the implementation in late summer. And of course, throughout that, we'll be doing storytelling and sharing. So I wanted to share that with you as well, because we think that is an important piece to this housing quandary, which is working together across borders. And that's really all I had to say. I should have recognized my colleagues at the beginning, Jenny Rate and Mike Solis hiding in the back, but you can ask any of us any questions, and we're always here to help.
I think that covered everything. Thank you. We're looking forward to answering any questions.
All right, before we go to discussion, I'm going to move aside. Any questions up front?
Steve, don't you run up?
I got some questions.
So one of the questions I had, when you started up and when you were doing the housing stock, and we have 8515 is our breakdown, and it shows what the others, you know, kind of are, but what would be the right breakdown? Or what's the goal breakdown?
Regarding like the kind of imbalance that I was referencing?
Yeah, so we have 8515. You said that's high on one end, low on the other, but what would be, you know, sort of the average goal that you'd want to see?
Well, I don't know if NIMCOG has like a kind of a goal for that, but I do know that Massachusetts, at least in the greater, the greater Boston, which is areas kind of considered, two-thirds of zoning is a single-family zoning, which is creating some of these housing crises where we're not allowed, not able to, because of the single-family zoning, to create multifamily housing. So I think anything going south of that, whether it's 50/50 or even lower, a shift in that balance would be appropriate. But I don't know if there's actually like best studies on that, because it's an issue across the country.
So we don't have a specific number or breakdown in the Housing Production Plan, or I should say, you don't in Tewksbury. Certainly, that's one of the type of benchmarks that we want to discuss regionally. Every community is probably going to have a different mix based on their unique geography. So I don't know if I have anything to add from what Carl said, other than probably 8515 is too much in one direction, but hopefully, we can work together to really establish a goal in the coming year.
I'll just add one quick thing. It's not in a plan, but it's more of looking at it more philosophically. It's, and it's not just your districts, per se, or the land that you have available, but it's allowing specific uses in those districts. So not only or exclusively one type of use, but accommodating a variety of uses, and whether that's through special permit or by right, allowing for and accommodating those different uses. And so right now, that balance that you were talking about, or the percentages that you mentioned, is not necessarily that it's out of balance, it's that a significant portion of your land right now only allows or is restricted to one use. And so it's more about those accommodations and what looks appropriate for the town is really part of that discussion that we're talking about.
No, I understand, but what I'm saying is, what you have here is you have 85% owner-occupied and 15% rental. Do you have a number for what you'd like to see the rental at versus owner-occupied? That's what I'm asking. What you guys are talking about, you're talking to the wrong guy, because I'm already there.
I actually thought I was answering that question in terms of establishing benchmarks, but I don't know, Carl, if you have anything else.
I don't have an expectation. I think it was more or less just providing that there is a philosophical difference in an imbalance, and that the community should start working on shifting in a different direction.
That leads me into my follow-up question, because it goes to the next one, but when you look at the communities you're talking about, you know, they're sort of that, they're the outside ring to the more Boston area of the past, meaning what it's, what all, most of the, every community in you, the exceptional Lowell, starts off as almost all owner-occupied, would never have had any kind of, you know, multi-housing type of development to start. Then you add into that Then you add into that, you know, you can call it what you want, but snob zoning, which creates your, you know, one lot, I mean, one acre lot, single-family homes, put on top of that. So most of these communities are coming at this backwards, meaning they're starting off with mostly single-family and you're trying to get them to go, if you want to do what we're talking about, you have to get them to go the opposite direction with those factors in the way. Is there any, you know, plan that addresses those type of communities? I mean, obviously, we all have a similar issue here, but it doesn't seem like it really necessarily takes into account that we start at the other end of the spectrum, most of us in these communities, that the greater Boston, more proper greater Boston area wouldn't have started at. They, you know, they already had everybody closer together to begin with. So we started with everybody spread miles apart and we're trying to, you know, if you're trying to deal with the other way, how can you address that for these type of communities to, you know, to encourage that?
I think part of it is long-range planning. You know, it's not something that happens immediately, it happens over time. It happened over time here, it happened over time in greater Boston communities that you're talking about. They developed a certain way, but it takes time to create new patterns of development. And so if the town's goals might be to create new places where there's, you know, larger concentrations of housing or economic development or those types of things, or greater connectivity to transportation access, like bus routes that don't exist right now that could exist in the future, that would be part of a long-range plan and happen gradually over time. That's the same way that other communities approach it, even the ones in the greater Boston region that you're referencing. So it's really part of that long-range goal. It doesn't happen immediately to make that transition or to, you know, like you said, kind of working backwards, but it would be over time and based upon a vision that the town might have or share.
Just expanding on that, I mean, I do think that a lot of the, I mean, the plans that Chris kind of spoke to, these are long-term things. This isn't a sprint, this is, you know, is a marathon. There's, you enact one kind of policy change, it's gonna take, you know, potentially decades for you see, before you see change. And I think one component of this is really understanding how we got to where we are. And this is the stuff that I like to focus on. I'm not the policy and the data, but I really focused on the kind of disparities and inequities in our communities. And when you look at zoning, a lot of the zoning that we're talking about today around single-family zoning was built on segregating America. And that's why some of the zoning exists and hasn't changed for almost 100 years, because it's specifically set up, designed to segregate. And I think it's going to take, to speak to your thing, it's going to take some brave policy decision and decision-makers to change that, to start that change that is happening across the community, to kind of not right those wrongs, but to make communities more inclusive instead of exclusive.
And then last one, I'm sorry, but the other ones, you know, because we started off the meeting and this is where I was already confused when we started, we're talking about housing production, but maybe we're focusing on affordable, but then I'm losing track as to what do we really mean by affordable? And what I mean by that is there's the affordable that's, you know, specifically and definitionally affordable housing. But creating housing in general theoretically can bring down the fact that we have the highest rents in the region because you create housing. So it's not that you're creating affordable housing under the definition, but making housing more affordable by offering more stock to bring down the average, which makes things more affordable for people in general as opposed to a specific segment that I'm not sure what we mean when we're talking about it or what we're meant to be focusing on here, but not focusing on affordable housing in the, you know, the aggregate doesn't seem to make a lot of sense because if we're only focusing on the one, we're still gonna be looking at having, you know, these rents that are way above, you know, towns that you wouldn't think we'd be above in, in rent, but we are. And if you're not providing, you know, you get 85-15, rentals are not, you know, a big portion of what we have. But, you know, there's towns that have an even slightly better ratio whose rents, or worse ratio, that are even lower rent-wise. So there's some disconnect there at least, but to me, affordable housing, that bigger affordable housing, meaning providing the housing to try and help that as well as definitionally affordable units that go along with it.
Yeah, it can definitely be confusing when you're saying the, whatever, the definition of affordable housing in the housing world versus, I think, what?
Is affordable?
That housing that is affordable, right? And you need housing for all income levels. You have seniors on fixed income and if costs go up, their income doesn't go up and you need to keep housing as affordable for them. You have young adults who are entering the workforce and making $15, $20 an hour. They need housing that is aligned with their income. So I think that when we talk about affordable housing or that is affordable for the community, talking about all types of housing for all types of income levels that exist, so that there is a place to call home and you're not priced out of communities simply because your income either decreased or because the wages that you work in the community are so low that you have to, I think Chris pointed out, drive an hour just to come to, say, in this example, Tewksbury to work at the grocery store, but you can't live in the community that you serve.
I might add, housing production plan definitely has priority goals for both capital A, affordable housing subsidized and for market rate housing. Thinking about the goals for market rate housing and the 85-15, I was thinking, as you mentioned it again, vacancy rates are an important thing to consider. The rental and the sales vacancy rates are close to zero in Tewksbury and most towns in our region. A healthy rental market is more like 5% to 8%, a healthy sales market might be 2% to 3%. If it's lower than that, then people straight up have trouble finding vacancies. And so I might consider thinking about the vacancy rates and what that says about the housing supply rather than kind of the top-line mix or the numbers. But in terms of do we concentrate on subsidized housing or market rate housing, it feels like all of the above because there's a problem in both categories.
And just to maybe overemphasize a particular point, we actually need housing at all different levels. Again, that's the most important message to communicate here. So while it would be wonderful to only develop purely 100% affordable housing, that is very challenging to do. It's not impossible and it does happen in the region and beyond, but we're talking about needing to address housing at all different types of levels for people to make many different types of incomes in order to not have the vacancy rate that you have right now. So even if we're talking about affordable housing, we're really talking about mixed-income housing, meaning, you know, some of it is market rate or, you know, the current market rate and some of it is designated, you know, as affordable. And affordable in that case means like the way that it was described on one of the slides that Steve presented, where there was workforce, there were different percentages referenced. So not necessarily, you know, purely this or purely that, but fulfilling the needs of multiple people who earn less than a certain amount of income. And those are the folks who certainly need the housing, but we also need housing at all different levels in order to accommodate those people who make a lot less and the people who are also earning somewhere in the middle. So one of the slides in recommendations that we put into the housing production plan deals with something called missing middle housing. That's basically the type of housing where it's somewhere between a single-family home and a very large multifamily housing building. There's actually not a lot of those types of opportunities right now in this community. That sort of starter home, yeah, exactly. You know, it could be a two, it could be a three, it could be a fourplex, a sixplex. There's a variety of ways in which you approach that. And you do have developments with, you know, townhomes, for example, but it's finding more of those types of opportunities and increasing them in order to accommodate that group of people who need housing that meets their needs and that sort of middle gap as well.
You sure?
I'm all done answering the question.
Jonathan Champa, member of the Planning Board, Mr. Jopson, my fellow Planning Board, Mr. Lozot. Couple of things. Number one, please take my upcoming comments with a grain of salt because I'm actually a very strong proponent of the need for housing solutions, put it that way, for everything that you're talking about. I have a general distrust of data and numbers because you can make any data say whatever you want. We were in a meeting last night, we had one engineer telling us the data said one thing, the other engineer said the data, exact same data said the exact opposite. So I'm not dazzled or, you know, I'm not gonna make my decisions or form my opinions based on stats. One thing I would like to say is, you know, I would like to see 100% clarity on a lot of things when we're talking about this because the more legitimacy we can lend it, I think the better we can get people to buy in. So we say things like seniors don't get increases to their cost of living, well, actually they do because they're buying just two years ago, awarded the largest increase to Social Security ever, followed by another bump coming up this year of 3.9%. So maybe it's not sufficient, but there are increases and those should be reflected in whatever data you're presenting. What I really would like to know is two things. I came here to Tewksbury from Saugus. Why, right? Saugus was super affordable, right? Probably one of the most, has the lowest property tax rates in Massachusetts, has one of the lowest water and sewer rates in Massachusetts. Why? What's the trade-off? Route one, massive amounts of business, massive amounts of traffic, right? It doesn't have a T station or anything, it does have a bus line, but it doesn't have commuter rail or anything like that. And it doesn't have orange line, red line, it has proximity to it. When I started at Northeastern, I tried doing the orange line, lasted about a week and I was like, no. Okay. Why did I come here from Saugus? I wanted to get away from all that. I wanted a quieter community. I wanted more residential, less business. So while I would like to have, to be able to share this town with people of all levels of income, I don't think we should be punished because we're not the other place. Because if people want to go somewhere that's just purely affordable and they're making minimum wage, there are lots of other cities and towns that they can't afford to live in. But one question I really would like answered, and I don't know if you have the data and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but where you have a series of meetings coming up. Marty Walsh wanted Boston, they built 53,000 units and I think then he said he wanted to raise that to 69,000 by 2030. We've seen the boom in Boston. Have Boston rents gone down? Has Boston become more affordable?
Can we give me a minute?
Similarly, Somerville, they've built Assembly Row, they've done a lot of other development. And I remember, you know, 15, 20 years ago, you could buy a triple-decker in Somerville for about $500,000. You can't touch a triple-decker in Somerville for under $2 million now. So how did all of that increased housing and increased development make Somerville more affordable? Now the same thing's happening to Everett, same thing's happening to East Boston, and it's continuing to spread. So what I want to know is, how does this solve the problem? I understand the basic economics of supply and demand, but how does building 53,000 or 10,000, or in this case, you know, we're looking at 1,200 and something just for the MBTA, but another 12,000, how does that solve the problem? Do we have a ship taking on water and we're handing out thimbles, right? Or do we need to address the water? Like, do we have to come up with a solution that's actually gonna solve the problem? Not just say, well, if we have more housing, then that'll work. Because if we lower the cost of rent in Tewksbury, doesn't that just make Tewksbury more desirable again and therefore rents may go down? But then, once the, once our affordable housing goes from 14,000 applicants to 30,000 applicants, aren't we right back here again? We have a finite amount of land. And so pretty soon, middle isn't enough and we have to go big. So what I want to know is, how does the types of things you're working on, just increasing stock, how does just purely increasing stock solve the problem?
Not having all the data in front of me, I would say that the state has not kept up with its increasing of housing stock. So there might be, you know, some developments happening in these specific cities that you're mentioning, but I don't think it's keeping up with the need. So I think the last data that I saw, the state alone is 100,000 units short of its population or short of its need. I know, I don't know the specific of this community, but I know like in Lowell, it's like 3,000 units just in the city of Lowell they're behind. And when you look at housing production data, the state's not keeping up. So yes, there are some buildings being built and large buildings being built, but it's, we're already in a deficit. So we need all communities to do their part and not just say, oh, Boston's building this or Somerville's doing this. But if every community starts building more housing, we need to get ahead of it. And that's why I do these talks in various communities and we're trying to get other communities on board to increase their housing production because over the last 30, 40 years, it's just been on a sharp decline.
So if I could just add to that, so I think all of us in the affordable housing industry are a bit frustrated with circumstances that are beyond our control. And I made some reference to this in the beginning of talking about our experience at Tavernier Place, our project enacted for seniors. The challenge is, is that the costs are the costs. So if you're, if you're building more housing, it doesn't necessarily mean that, it doesn't necessarily mean that that will lower the overall cost of housing because interest rates are what they are, materials costs are what they are, labor costs are what they are, site acquisition costs are what they are, the infrastructure costs and the tie-in fees, they are what they are. So I could come to my community in Lowell and find a site and build a two-family house and say, I really want to make one of these affordable. But I can't because of all of those factors I just mentioned. So the only thing that makes them affordable are the subsidy sources that we talked about. And one of the things that makes it unaffordable is the fact that if you're paying $100,000 for a lot and you're putting one house on it, that $100,000 affects the price of that home. But if you find a lot that's zoned correctly and you can buy it for $300,000 and build 10 homes on it or 10 units, then that cost is distributed over more units and makes it more affordable. But the real challenge in my mind at least is the lack of subsidy. Because price controls don't work. Nixon tried it, it didn't work. So what do you do? And I do think that legislation like Chapter 40B led to communities really taking a hard look at things like zoning and proposals that are submitted to their zoning board of appeals for comprehensive permits that led to the development of housing that's not 100% affordable for every segment of the population, but it's more affordable because of the subsidy that goes into it than units that otherwise wouldn't exist.
One more quick question. The state, and there are multiple resources available to assist with rent and income and to subsidize housing projects and things like that. I think the number I saw was, was it 1,400 to, just to help the severely burdened?
Yeah, it was almost 15. It was between 14 and 15.
I don't know if you've ever sat in a planning board meeting or been to one of our larger meetings where we've had a major project, but this town has, has a little bit of concern about traffic. Where's the infrastructure side of all of this? You go putting 1,400 homes and that's another, say, 700 to 2,000 commuters on Route 38 at rush hour. I mean, that's gonna increase our traffic substantially. Who's talking to the state about coming in and helping support the infrastructure necessary to support their housing?
So you've brought up several great points. And to the initial kind of question and concern about adding more houses doesn't seem to be, you know, impacting the market, I would say that... I would say that, uh, we are perhaps doing better in terms of cost of living slash income at, than some other states, California. Um, and that is partially because we're at least building some. So there's always the question of what would the market be doing in absence of anything? And the fact is that we still aren't building as many housing units as perhaps some, some areas in the South where, uh, housing costs are less, uh, as a percentage of income. Uh, in terms of, well, you know, Tuxbury alone cannot change the housing market. And again, we probably agree with that. That is why we're trying to advance this regional strategy and bring in the state players to have that really tough discussion. And that connects to the next thing, which is the infrastructure. Some communities have traffic concerns, some have sewer, some have schools. We want to make sure, uh, as a region, that those concerns are addressed in a, in a holistic way along with the housing. Um, the part of the fact is, is that, uh, as we kind of are looking, people are living somewhere and they're commuting somewhere and that still is on many of our roads. So how can we enable folks to live near where they work to minimize those impacts, to increase the use of transit, to increase the ability to keep some land as conservation land? So that's some of the discussions we would like to have and think about.
I just want to jump in on that too. Um, because I hear this a lot, you know, what's the mitigation going to be when we build housing? I guess the question I would ask is, when a private developer comes in front of us, have we ever asked for mitigation as a community? We asked the state to do it. No, we don't.
Oh, we don't?
We don't. I've been here for my entire tenure as a, as a town manager. None of the private developers have provided any significant mitigation for traffic, for water, for sewer. They do things for their own development. They may throw a sidewalk in, maybe. But the community needs to look at itself and say, when these developments come forward, what mitigation are we requiring them to do? Not always look to the state. No, we do not. And that's been a flaw in this community. So we need to look at ourselves when these developments come in front of the planning board or the selectmen or the board or any of them. What are we asking for? And I can tell you, we've asked for very little.
So because you all talk long enough for me to be able to answer your question from earlier about rent, good job. From 2010 to 2023, median rent in Boston went up 55%. For reference, in Tuxbury, it went up 63%. So it does seem to be, it's not going to go down, but if it can make it go up slower, that feels like a win.
I'll also say that in the Merrimack Valley, and I mean, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the cost of rental units and housing is getting more comparable to, to Boston, whereas 10 years ago, there was so a huge difference and it's getting a lot, uh, closer as well. So, and that data kind of supports that.
Just, just for the factual part of this, um, so there, um, first I want to disclose that I was on the Boston 2030 housing task force. So I helped to create the plan that you were referencing, um, with that housing goal. And we actually knew at the time that it wasn't going to be enough and that it was probably going to have to be adjusted. And that Boston alone was not the only one that would be able to achieve that goal, but that actually, uh, the, all of the communities in the Metropolitan Mayor's Coalition would have to jointly come together and achieve goals, which is why they created a regional housing task force. So that's, that's one. I wanted to just make sure I put that out there. Two, uh, what we're talking about, I think is really important in terms of thinking about impacts, but again, I think that fits into the category of long-term. If you're thinking long-range planning, which you should be, then you're probably thinking about what kind, what ways can the town actually step in and build for and accommodate new infrastructure, which means a lot of different things. Some of it you're required to do. You're required to educate your children, whether they're the children living here right now or the children of the future. You can't always ask for all of those things to be put on the back of a developer. It might also be things that the community itself needs to actually attend to. Um, and then lastly, in terms of the impact of housing on costs, there are actually studies that have more recently been conducted around when you do increase the amount of housing that's available in a, in a particular area where there has been limited production, that it does actually have a nominal increase, uh, dent on, uh, prices, meaning that prices actually were lower and there was greater housing availability and attainability. Um, and those are in all different types of places, not just in, uh, cities. So I would, you know, I can certainly share that information with, um, Alex so that it's more widely distributed, but there is evidence of that. It doesn't mean that, again, it's, it's long range. We're talking about, as Carl mentioned, under production in the, not, not just here, but nationally. Uh, if you've been underproducing housing for more than two decades, which is really what we're talking about, like since the nineties, when things were really good, in quotes, in terms of production and growth, um, we went backwards. We actually had stasis in terms of development and production. Um, it might've felt like there was development happening. Development, I'm sure happened here, it didn't not happen. Um, but it's more that it didn't happen enough. We need more of it. So even if you see that sort of, you know, a causation between the amount of growth and rents or the amount of growth and home prices, it needs to keep on continuing and happening over time to the point where it is more stable. Because right now it's completely out of whack, to the point where there's 0.3% vacancy available in ownership opportunities in the town and 0% availability in rental units. So something can happen in order to increase that availability and vacancy and that enough would be good.
And just building on that, I know you love data, so just, but, but, uh, there's also some recent, uh, data and, and research that came out regarding communities that did implement, um, zoning changes, uh, for housing opportunities versus those that didn't. And the ones that, um, did implement measures and changed zoning, um, had, uh, like stalling or reduction in housing, housing costs in the communities where those that either, uh, made revisions that were more exclusionary or didn't change at all, had, um, had increases in their housing costs in their communities. So there is evidence out there that shows that revisions to be a more inclusive, um, do reduce costs, but also prevent, um, the, the rise in costs in their community.
Good evening. My name's Jane Wellman. Um, I think I've met all of you and I, I know all of you. I really first want to thank you for being here tonight and sacrificing some of your free time with your families. I also would like to extend that to the, my fellow boards that are here tonight and the folks, um, who are sacrificing their time to be with us. This is a very important conversation that Tuxbury is beginning. We've spent some time talking about how we've gotten where we are and I am particularly interested in figuring out how we go forward. Carl, you mentioned something that hits home for me particularly. I have a 24-year-old son who has graduated from college and we looked at what a cost of an apartment in Tuxbury would be in a one-bedroom that we could find last night was $2,400. There's no way he can afford that. I have an elderly mother who cannot afford any sort of, um, housing here in Tuxbury. She lives in Bangor, Maine, and I am trying to figure out a way to bring her to live closer to me because as she experiences more health issues, it's a concern. And third, I'm a single parent and if, and I am a public servant. I work in another community. And if I were to buy my house today, to your point, I wouldn't be able to. The value now exceeds what I would be able to afford. So what you're saying speaks very personally to me and many people I know in this community. I take phone calls all the time, particularly from single parents who are trying to find a place to live, um, and older women. That's the demographic that tends to call me and ask for help and I refer them to CTI very often. So I have a couple of quick questions and I'm going to mention them all and then you can divvy them up as apropos. It's important for Tuxbury to understand how best we can use our resources and invest our Affordable Housing Trust Fund effectively, efficaciously on a go-forward basis. Where are we going to be able to do the most impact? I appreciate the information that you put, Chris, in our housing production plan where you're talking about families of up to three or 33% of, um, our shortages and elderly individuals living alone is 30% of our interest. So looking at that as part of our plan. But, um, for the boards in this room tonight, we have to look at, at long-range planning. We have to look at policy initiatives and then we have to also look at how do we, which projects are we going to elevate? And we have to do it strategically so that we're not kind of fitting this thing in here and fitting this thing in there and then not investing our funds as best we can. And so that's sort of what I think is we have to create that vision and invite the developers and invite the partners that you're talking about, um, to the table. And I don't quite know the best way to do that. So my question to you is, um, twofold. What kinds of projects are most successful in other communities that you're working with, um, that's, that's helping a lot, that's getting more financing, that's getting higher numbers, that's, we are trying to target 60% AMI, but what's, what works that you've seen? And then, um, I know that Lowell on the policy side is talking about accessory dwelling units and they're wrestling with that. And so I think that that's an interesting policy for us to pursue because if there are tax initiatives and I can build an accessory dwelling unit on my home for either my child or my parent to live in, you know, is there, is there policy around that that's efficacious, that is actually helpful, even if it doesn't hit those subsidized housing initiatives? So I'd like for you to, um, to kind of look at those pieces. And once again, thank you for being here tonight.
So we've talked about, uh, housing costs and, um, and we've talked about subsidy and how competitive it is, uh, to find that subsidy. Um, so the, the sort of sweet spot with EO HLC, uh, uh, in terms of the number of units would be at least 43 in order to maximize the benefit of credits. Um, we have a 15-unit, uh, project, uh, that we did as part of the suburban rental pilot program, uh, way back in 2008. Um, and it has very little subsidy. It has some home funds in it and some local CP, uh, not CPA money, but some local funds in it as well. Um, and the trouble with a 15-unit project, the, the units went from 80% of median to 150% and, and they were all two and three-bedroom units. And the trouble with that 15 units is that if there's a prolonged vacancy or if someone is, uh, encountering hard times and isn't able to keep up with paying their rent, all of a sudden you're in the red, um, uh, just because of the cost of operation and maintenance. So the density is important, is the point. And, um, you know, if you can look at, uh, trying to find sites that could accommodate eight to 10 units per acre, um, in a reasonably planned way, uh, that protects, uh, natural resources that might be on that site, doesn't infringe, impinge on wetland resource areas, for example, um, is close to, uh, services, um, so that, uh, people won't be driving up and down, uh, Route 38, but can drive a shorter distance to Market Basket or the local drugstore to get groceries and medication. Um, you know, that's, to me, that's the way to think about it. Density matters and, uh, you certainly have developments that have taken place, uh, both on a for-sale basis and rental, um, that seem to me to be pretty dense, um, uh, in terms of the number of units per acre. And, uh, you know, if you went to, to, if you went to the state agencies and said, look, I have a 200-unit project, I need Lytec for 200 units, you're not going to get it. I mean, you, you could say to them, I have a plan for, to develop 200 units and, um, I need Lytec for that and I'm willing to talk to you about phases and maybe it's five phases of 40 units each. Um, uh, that would be more competitive, I think. Anyway, I, I, I hope that answered your question at least in, to some degree.
How you doing? Uh, my name's Mark Krappman. I'm a selectman in town, but I've also been on-
...development for, for over 30 years. I wish I could bring you all back to me 25 years ago when I was sitting up on a stage and telling everybody about how we need to get people away from rental and give them the American dream of homeownership. And that was the big thing we were trying to sell 25 years ago. And every plan and concept was, that was the, what we were trying to do. Interest rates were, yeah, he's nodding. Interest rates were 19%. People couldn't afford to buy homes and all we did was change everything that you're talking about right now. We, we did, everybody was renting and we were working feverishly to find a way for people to buy their own homes. So every plan and every state agency and every federal government and the banks were subsidizing so that we finally could get down and give these interest rates and lower them down. And when everything was hitting 3%, it was more affordable for everybody to buy a home than through rent. So that's why we're here. We worked on that plan. We tried to give everybody the American dream. I'm on a community development board in Boston. There was many multifamily homes that people had the option of rent to own. That's what, that was the projects, that was the plan that we put in place. And we had everybody, okay, you're going to live here for a certain amount of time, you're going to pay, then you're going to have an option to buy out. Those people that were loan can, owners are all living in Linfield now, renting them out for four, five times the amount that they paid for. So it really didn't work out the way we were probably thinking about at the time, but that's what happens. So here we are now and we don't have enough rentals. Why would people rent if you can buy and pay less than what it would be? So that's why we, this isn't a shocker to us where we are. It, it's what happens. Um, I listened to the infrastructure about it. We never get a straight answer. I heard Richard's point that the town does not do enough. I understand that, but there also isn't enough state or federal money coming to this, this plan of trying to make more affordable housing around the communities that you can access is broken. It really is. It's like, we have affordable housing in other communities, but there's no way to get to your job. So there's no great transportation plan of trying to solve that solution. If there was easier transportation for people to get into the city or get to their communities, we wouldn't be having this conversation. You know, we have a meeting every single year where we meet the new residents and I go and I'm, we're going to be doing it in like a week from now. And we're going to have people from Somerville, East Boston, Riviera, all coming and they just moved to Tuxbury. Why did you move to Tuxbury? Because it's more affordable. Because I wanted to get away from the city. I wanted to go to a town. No one in this town, if, if I brought you up into a crowd in this community and you told the residents you want to bring 1,400 units here, it wouldn't go over well. I'm just telling you, it would not go over well. We've been building and building and building in this community. We're constantly building. If there's an empty lot in Tuxbury, I, I dare any of you to find it and say, what can we build on? Because we've been allowing building all across this town. The problem is, is that we're not getting back state and federal monies. We're not doing any infrastructure around it to help us come up with those, uh, problems that we're having. And when we try to work through things and we solve something, then there's another unfunded mandate thrown on top of us. I mean, this is something that unless there's a way of solving the problem, it's not going to be, you're not going to be saying, okay, let's designate this area and say, we're going to put in 1,400 units. People can't, they can't build it. They can't afford to build what we're talking about and no one in this town wants this to be the city of Tuxbury. They moved here because they love the town feeling. That's why they're living here. The residents don't want it to happen. If you go, if I left my house in North Tuxbury, I can get the sale in New Hampshire if I go out that way quicker than I can get to sell Tuxbury. That's how bad the traffic is in this town. And so why would we want to, how, how am I going to go out to the residents and sell to them, oh, by the way, we don't have enough housing in this community. We're going to put 1,400 units, but no one's going to give us any infrastructure to fix anything. We're just going to bring more units here because there's a need. I didn't think anybody had an answer.
Minor correction. I don't think the housing production plan set a goal of 1,400 units, uh, just that it noted- just that it noted that 1,400 families pay more than 50% of their income on housing per year. So that is part of the discussion, regional housing discussion, should there be some more numerical goals. But the housing production plan does not set a goal of 1,400.
Good evening. James Mackey. Is this working?
Yeah.
Oh, it's not working. I was going to say, it's green. Mic number three. Try the third time. Third time's a charm. All right. James Mackey, Vice Chair, Select Board. I want to thank all of you for your time, also all the other board members. This is the start of a discussion. We're not going to solve anything in this room tonight. I do want to thank all of you. I'm a big fan of tapping any available resources we have, whether it's for information, funding, et cetera. But we do need to, the folks on this side of the room need to come together, start having some discussions. Again, this is our start, but we need a Tewksbury solution. Some good points have been made about a lot of residents don't want this to become a city. I am one of them. We do need to address what we came here to address over the next few months and years, which is affordable housing. There are lots of other initiatives. The rules were outlined at the beginning. We're not talking about MBTA. We're not talking about all these other issues. Affordable housing is what we need to focus on. So that being said, infrastructure is a problem. We have wetlands, which I know were mentioned. Our road system is not designed to support hundreds and thousands of additional units, but we can address the affordable unit issue. We have our Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We have the various boards in this room who all have the power, authority, resourcing to start making some of those changes. And personally, that's where I would like us to focus over the next weeks, months, years. So again, thank you to everyone in the room, and that's kind of more of a statement, no question.
All right. So I'll ask one question. My name's Todd Johnson. I'm the Chair of the Select Board, and thank you all again for being here. And I want to thank the boards that joined us tonight as well, because this is certainly a difficult issue. It takes a lot of people to row the boat together. I want to kind of approach this, I see the glass as half-full, right? We've done a zoning overhaul. We have made a lot of changes in our community. The 15% of rental, while it may be insufficient, 10 or 15 years ago wasn't even close to 15% in this community. So you can look at it as we're standing here today and we have a significant deficiency, but you can also see it as a lot of continuous progress has been made. Some of the rents, I suspect, are higher because all those units are basically brand-new. And that has to be considered in the equation as well, in my opinion. But I have one question, and it's very simple, because we're not going to solve the problem this evening. It's going to take a long time. And as I listen to the concerns and I listen to some of the comments and feedback that you've provided, which is all very helpful, we're talking about long range, long term, and that is absolutely realistic. So nobody should be fooled. We're not going to have a magic wand here, but there are things that we can do. And all I would like to hear is, and especially Steve, with respect and thanks, you gave us a laundry list of places to go to look. What I'm looking for is, in the communities that you all represent and work with, give us one clear-cut example of something that this town can look to, to say they had success with X. Because we, the town manager mentioned, we have $8 million to leverage. I think we hear that there's a will in the room to do something, not to do 1,000 units, but to begin to take those baby steps. So what I'm interested in hearing is, what is a concrete, tangible example in a neighboring community that has made a difference, that people say, "Look, here's a baby step that actually benefited the community and benefits residents," that we might be able to consider in the context of our resources and our desire to take a step forward? So I'll start there, and I'll thank you.
I'll take a stab at this. So first of all, I appreciate the way that you framed your question, because no, we don't have a magic wand. Well, none of us do, by the way. We don't, we don't have all the answers. We don't know, there's not a specific answer to some of the things that are being raised as concerns, because we don't know. There are things that we need to work on. There are things that we might need to advocate for, resources that we might not have right now that we might need. But there are a couple of examples I'd like to highlight. One of them is the town of Drakken, and the other one is Chelmsford. So I'll just go there. And then you can fill in other blanks if you have anything else. So Drakken recently worked with the Coalition for a Better Acre. They had a former town-owned building, and they wanted to encourage veterans' housing, I believe, and ended up securing the opportunity to work with a local developer, CBA, as they're known. They're based in Lowell, but they do work throughout, I think, the area, if given the opportunity. And that opportunity came up with a property in the town of Drakken, which was recently completed, and the ribbon was cut, I believe, earlier this year. And it is a limited number of units, I believe, seven. Is that correct? Seven or nine. A modest number of units in a building that used to be a school. It's a beautiful historic renovation. It also is obviously providing deeply affordable housing to people who really need it within the population of people who that particular organization typically serves. They also have a very large population of people who they serve who live in Lowell, as well as in other areas within our region. But I think that's a really good example of a town nonprofit partnership, sort of public-private, where there was an opportunity, there was the request for proposals. They were responsive. There was a redevelopment that occurred. It leveraged a variety of resources, both local and state and other, and ultimately created suitable housing for people who really needed it in our area. So that's one thing I just wanted to highlight, and it might be simplistic terms that I'm using, or there might be things that I said that you didn't understand, and I'm glad to explain on either side of it in more detail. In Chelmsford, one of our neighbors, they have a housing authority who's been, who is one of the most innovative housing authorities in the entire Commonwealth. That housing authority spun off a long time ago, a nonprofit entity, kind of similar to what Common Ground is to, in the relationship here, Common Ground to CTI. Some nonprofit organizations basically spin off an arm that does affordable housing development. And in this case, housing authorities have a lot of limitations, as the Housing Authority Board members may know, in terms of creating new housing. And the Chelmsford Housing Authority recognized that limitation, but also knew that they really needed to increase the availability of housing for their community. So a long time ago, looked at developing Choice, what became Choice, which is a developer that now is actually doing work throughout the entire Commonwealth. And some of the things that they did early on that I think are worth noting in the town included the redevelopment of housing authority property, including the expansiveness of opportunities for seniors, for families, and others in need of housing at a very low-income level, but also leveraging in other communities, mixed-income development opportunities. So not just, again, that low, people who are extremely low-income needing housing, but also people with slightly higher incomes as well. So, you know, again, two very different examples, but I think are examples that showcase the importance of that public-private partnership, the importance of town or land opportunities and leveraging them, the possibility of amending zoning in order to accommodate that opportunity, and also dedicating local resources and leadership in order to make it happen in a manner that allows it to occur in a very expedited manner for people who really need housing.
So I congratulate CBA for what they did with that former school. We looked at it with their then-town manager and decided not to respond to the RFP because we felt it was too small. But when we talked with the town manager during the tour about whether or not the land in the back could also accommodate some new construction in order to make the project more feasible, the answer was no. He didn't think that that would work politically. So we did take a pass on that. But Drakken did designate us as the developer of a 17-acre site, which the town owns. They've agreed to lease that to us over a 60-year period. That has its difficulties, but in any case, the governor announced the funding for that project back in May, and we're hoping to close and start construction probably by April, we hope, of next year. And that would be 56 one-bedroom units, again, for seniors who are age 62 and over and persons with disabilities. And in that case, the town used CPA money to help us with pre-development to the tune of above $450,000. And we invested another $200,000 in pre-development in order to bring the plans to 100% CD and get all of the civil engineering done and deal with the various legal structures that we needed to deal with. So we have a comprehensive permit. We have funding that's been committed to us, and we'll be undertaking construction next year. So that's sort of an incremental approach to dealing with a challenge that, based on the true or false data that was displayed today, the burden that you see amongst seniors who are living in a home that they can't afford anymore would be better off in a subsidized unit of some sort, and living in a community, really, of their peers. So that may be something to think about, which, of course, would have fewer traffic impacts, because they're unlikely to be driving to Lowell unless it's to go to the hospital, God forbid, and more likely to be focused in the local area, trying to find goods and services.
I just want to get a clarification, if I may. At least two, if not all three, of the projects involve reusing town property?
So we've done projects that were privately owned. The 31 units that I mentioned that we finished in Acton, Massachusetts, just received our certificate of occupancy, our final, that was purchased by us from a private owner. And we also purchased a site, another site in Acton, where we hope to build 43 units of family housing. And we're now working with the community on a preliminary basis to address design issues, how we can partner with other organizations. There is a group in that town that works with people who have autism. Some autistic children, for example, are aging out of their homes where their parents are now senior citizens and are unable to deal with all the challenges of their autistic child. And this organization, for example, would help that person live in a multifamily development and provide them the services and the support that they need in order to become self-sustaining and self-sufficient. And we'll be designating some number of the units that we have in that development, probably 10% of them, for people with autism. And there's a specific state program that you can apply to in order to help subsidize those units. There's also a single-family house on the site. We're not in a historic district, but the house was built in 1850, and this town has placed it on Massachusetts' cultural resources inventory. So there's considerable support to save the house. So we're working with Miniman Arc to try to figure out how they may be able to use it as a location for programming and/or respite, where families may need to get away for two or three days because they just need a break from all of the challenges that they're facing. So I just mentioned those projects because it's an example of how you can shape these projects so that they meet different needs in the community and engage different partners in order to address community needs and enhance the quality of life of people who otherwise might not have an opportunity.
After this discussion tonight, I think we're all going to have to sign up for a weekend at that place. So, listen, we're closing in on 9 o'clock, and I want to respect your time. And I know you may have had another question.
That's very quick, Mike.
Yeah, okay.
Which is just an idea.
Let's bring it in for a landing.
Right. Because you did say that you, for I, sorry about that, pretty much ready to go out of the box. In Cambridge, federal government had the Volpe Transportation Plot, which was a massive complex of government buildings. They consolidated all of their operations into one new building. They were going to put in two tower residences and an office building on that property. I think if everybody here went to the state of Massachusetts and started talking about Tewksbury State Hospital as if they consolidated the hospital operations into one new modern building, then that would open up a lot of area, and they could start to address some of these housing issues.
Thank you for the comment. Okay. I want to thank you all from CTI and NIMCOG for joining us. I think we demonstrated that this is a conversation that has to continue. There's no easy solutions. I want to thank you for at least helping us to start the conversation. I want to thank the town manager and his team for organizing it, and I want to thank the different boards that are here tonight. It's another night out, but clearly people are energized and focused on it. So an important topic for our community. I'm going to note, without taking votes, that it's 8:55, and all boards have unanimously adjourned, if that's acceptable to my colleagues. Okay. All right. So thank you. Have a good evening, and we'll meet again in the future and talk about this some more.